I figured that out.
What's your grade?
I was surprised.
And she never shows up.
We don't have a, do we have a call? One, two, three, four, yeah. I think Roger is coming. I think he is coming. I think he is. Roger? Patty's not and we don't know her.
Do we know something we don't?
Oh, okay. So we didn't have to, I thought we had a meeting. Okay. No, I was just wondering if we were going into it after the meeting.
You guys don't send this in because it's gonna be eight o'clock. Three, two.
Here's Roger. Roger.
Nice to see y'all.
Please call the board for a rise. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, the New Jersey Public Board of Education is now in action to ensure the right of the public to advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies of which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provisions of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has closed notice of this meeting to be publicized by having daytime and place thereof sent to the record, the town news, and/or Star Ledger newspapers, the constituent borough parks, borough libraries, as well as posting in the school district's principals' offices, faculty rooms, and board office. According to New Jersey Public Act 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking of tobacco strictly prohibited anywhere in public school buildings or anywhere in school grounds, including but not limited to the parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators will be subject to a fine not to exceed $100. Roll call, Roger.
Here.
Stephanie.
Here.
Patty.
Here.
Claudia.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Vito.
Here.
Angel.
Here.
Pardon me, Mrs. Umberg called me or sent me a note indicating she has a work commitment tonight. And before Tom calls them, it's my pleasure to introduce our two new student reps who are at their first meeting. I'm gonna probably butcher your last name, Nick, sorry, but Nick.
Shaneman.
Shaneman, okay, and Marissa Wozniak.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Hello, hello. With that, do you guys have a copy of the agenda in front of you?
Yes.
Marissa, if you wouldn't mind reading the mission of the Riverdale School District, please.
Okay. The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach his or her potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, and to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Core Curriculum content standards.
Just jumping right in, so you guys know. At this time then, are there any comments, public comments on the agenda items only at this point, and there will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting? Anyone? Seeing as there are none, we're gonna move right into, you guys are back on the spot, if you give a student memory report at all?
Okay, so we put together a list of some of the things that are going on at our school right now. We, on Friday, the girls' track team won the league championships, and we actually tied with Maua. The senior prom is coming up in June, the sophomore social happened two weeks ago, and the freshman formal is coming up soon. This week and last week were AP testing for the students, and that's ending on Wednesday. There is a field trip coming up for physics classes to Dorney Park this week. Senior service also starts this week, where the seniors get to go and volunteer their time throughout town. We have a break for Labor Day coming up that's extended because of the snow days that carried over from the winter, and we also have the high school spring concert that's coming up on the 24th.
Well, thank you. We have no committee reports. But honestly, I don't have a report as a president since we were here last week, nothing's really happened, other than some nice weather, and then we get this. Mr. Fletcher.
I just have one item in addition to the stuff that we discussed last week, and that is that Chris Bang and June Park were, or had first place placed first, I should say, in the sixth annual New Jersey Chinese Study Competition, and they each got a $1,000 scholarship as a result of their participation and their first-place finish.
Can I sneak back in one other thing?
Of course.
What is it, June 7th for senior awards night?
Correct.
That's, you know, speaking of money and all too, so if anybody from the board can actually be there as well, it's a nice, nice night. Again, a lot of scholarships from the communities, which is fantastic to see. At this point then, can I get a motion on the consent agenda items and all? Roger?
Second.
Second, right, Dot. And again, just for people out there, the consent agenda items are all the asterisk, asterisk items. So any discussion?
Mr. President, just, I gave the board a memorandum that modified the resolution that is number seven, E-16. It changes the number of hours and the participants in the freshman physics program. The revision is actually about $2,600 less than the one that appeared on your agenda. And then for item 16, it should say the 2012 curriculum work, summer 2012, not 2011.
Thank you. So that would just be changed with the addendum and change to 2012. Dot, discussion right?
Well, actually, I'd like to, I was gonna pull number 16, what is that, E-16, only because I'd like to ask a couple of questions about it, and also pull for a separate vote, number, under curriculum student affairs, IX-1. And a quick question, yep, a quick question on under A-3, special request. Under eight, A-3, sorry.
Under half.
The polls are.
Sixteen, actually.
And what one?
Eight, E-16 is one of the polls.
Right.
And nine, one, is the second.
Roman number nine, one.
Roman number, oh, thank you.
Okay, and a quick question under eight, A-3.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to know, the funds reported there is $3,000, are those district funds or tri-district funds, and how many faculty possibly would be involved in that training?
This is district funds.
Okay.
And it's all the faculty.
All, so all would be appointed to go?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Michael?
On nine, I guess I wanna pull, the intent being that I'd like to add that notices the Board of Education in addition be published on its website.
Which, which?
Oh, I'm sorry, the wrong nine, I'm on the computer, it's, let me go back, it is 11, nine.
Roman numeral 11, nine?
Yeah, it says be it resolved, the official notices, the Board of Ed, publish the record, the town news, or the Star Ledger, but I would wanna put, and I'd made this point before, I think, I know I have, that I'd also would like it that any notice that we do be on our website.
Mike, the official notice comes back to us when we put an advertisement in the paper and get something back from that newspaper attesting that the advertisement was in there. Primarily, it's due to ads for projects and things like that, meeting a legal opportunity, legal obligation. If we put it on the website, it's just for notification.
Exactly.
But this is for our official.
I understand that, but I've made the point before, I'd like it to be part of our resolution, is how we do business here, that if we are giving notice out through the medium, according, in accordance with the requirement of law, that we also give a courtesy to those who wanna take a look and see what's happening by putting it on our website, because it is something that's gone out.
Right, I think what Tom's trying to draw the distinction of is we do that as a matter of course, we post things.
So it should be no.
On the website, but what Tom is making the distinction is that when it says official notice, it's, it's for the purpose of having the return receipt so that we can, and you can't get a return receipt, it doesn't, there's no obligation.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it doesn't satisfy anything.
I'm not doing it in the disjunctive, I'm doing it as that official notices, the board should be published in the record, the town news, or the Star Ledger, I'm sorry, be published in the website and/or, and then one of those three, so you can do any of the three. The idea simply being that I'd like to see it mandatory on the website, you still have the newspapers, I'm not saying delete the newspapers.
But then the website can't be an official.
You need to make a separate.
The website doesn't satisfy the official.
Legal obligation.
Your concern is that it says that official in there.
Well, that's, well, that's the purpose of designating the official notices.
Yeah, but.
Is so that we satisfy the legal requirement for the return receipt, that's why we, that's why that resolution is there.
I understand that, but if it said be it resolved that in, that official notices in addition to being published on the website are published in those three things, all you've done is add a requirement.
You should make a separate motion.
Oh, okay.
To just post them there.
Okay.
This serves a distinct purpose.
And then I could do, I'll do that new business then?
Yes, we do it anyway, but you can, you can memorialize it if you wish.
Okay. And then I had a question on 12 in that same section, I think it's 11, 12.
Mm-hmm.
And what are formal policy versus informal policy? Or formal policy versus any other type of policy, I mean, I thought they all were formal.
Again, we're drawing the distinction between the action of the board that has a process of approving by resolution twice the policies. As you all, as you know, people will use the term policy to describe a practice, a procedure, something that only occurs in the seventh grade, they'll say, what's the policy on that? People use that term. This is the, these are the policies that the board puts forward.
So when you say formal, you mean board policies?
Correct.
That have been approved by the board via vote in public.
Yeah, but by formal, you mean board, so then I would like to change it to board policies. I didn't think there were any other policies, but if that's a distinction from a formal versus not, let's put it down as board policies, that's what it is.
So that's what it says.
I mean, I think that's what you.
But it says formally approve policies of the Riverdale Regional Board of Education.
But Patrick just gave me the distinction why it's formal policy.
Because it's getting through a vote.
All right, you know, I could just abstain or vote no against it.
Go ahead, okay.
I just, the language just doesn't make any sense to me.
No, it was just for discussion, any other consent agenda items for discussion, Dot?
Just one quick point, I just wanna make sure I understand this, on number 24, also in section 11, I believe, yeah, section 11, number 24. The change is being made to adjust the conference mileage for this current school year to 28,000, so that's between now and the end of June, is that correct?
The theoretical approach is that we wanna make sure we abide by all the rules and regulations, that we don't exceed $28,000 by the end of this fiscal year, June 30.
So last year at reorg, it was set a lot higher.
Right.
So I guess we anticipate, we set it higher so that we don't exceed, or is that it?
That's correct.
And then around this time of year, we revise it?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or?
Yes.
On the consent agenda items?
Tom, except for the two that were pulled, which are items number eight, 16, and nine, one, have a roll call on the consent agenda items, please.
Roger?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes, it's what I'm going to abstain from, eight, E-3.
Claudia?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes, I'd like to, yes for all, except for the following, abstaining from eight, E-3, a no to eight, E-4, and, hold on. Wait a minute, that might be, let me double check, I think that's it. Yeah, just those two, due to individual concerns.
With respect to, I think it's 11, 11, 12, I'm gonna say no because I don't understand what a formal policy is versus a policy, as to the others, yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Angel.
I'm sorry, I'm taking, yes.
Yes, okay.
Mike, I'm sorry, did you vote no?
11, 11, 12, yes on everything else.
Thank you.
Okay, let me regroup here for just a second. Then brings us to, I have a motion on item number eight, 16, is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the appointment of Riverdale Regional Tri-District Professional Staff for summer 2012 curriculum work, as per the attached list that salaries indicated and funded by local tri-district funds. Have a motion, please.
Second.
Moved by Stephanie.
Yeah, I'm sorry, a second.
Out.
Claudia?
Claudia, a second. Okay, Dot, since you pulled this.
Yeah, I was just wondering, Patrick, if you could kind of summarize some of this work here. Also, what is the difference between a freshman physics workshop versus a freshman physics curriculum?
The workshop, all right, well, let me ask those, answer those questions first, then go back to the broader subject. There is a class that's gonna be offered at Bergen Tech.
Right, the physics first.
Which is, that's what the workshop is.
Okay.
And then the curriculum is revising the curriculum to meet, you know, to take the physics class that we have, plus the theory of the other freshman, of physics first, if you will, which is a common term that people use, and that's to put the document together for the three teachers who will be teaching it in, or during the course of the school year, and then the fourth, the fourth teacher is a special ed person.
Didn't we already, last summer, pay a group of teachers to sit down and write the curriculum? And that's what we voted on back a couple of months ago, so this is just revising, is what you're saying?
I don't think they wrote a whole curriculum document.
That we read.
That whole, you know.
I, I.
This is doing a lesson plan.
Pacing guides and all.
Oh, this is a supplemental, so it's curriculum-related work, but the curriculum will not be changed per se, it's voted on, approved.
Right, no, it's not the curriculum, it's the, it's the, how are we now laying that out?
Okay, and can you talk to some of the other programs as well?
Yeah, there's the broader issue that's, that you raised, is Riverdale is the LEA, or Local Education Agency, for the tri-district curriculum office. Tri-district curriculum office is composed of the curriculum coordinator and a secretary. And what is, as the LEA, what happens is, we collect all of the money, Mr. Bonfiglio and his staff track the accounting and the finances for it all, make sure that the billing is appropriate, and the receipt of funds is appropriate, and then they, and of course, the dispersment of the funds that's associated with it. And as the LEA, when items are expended from that account, which is the, what we commonly refer to as the 70 account, that's the first designation of it, that's the fund that it's in, we also approve the expenditures that come out of that account, whether they are for our staff or staff of the elementary schools. So, the curriculum committee from the Riverdale Board of Ed, and then the tri-district committee of the other two boards, when we met, I think it was May 8th was the last meeting, went over the various areas of curriculum that needed to be continued to work on. So as an example, we are still revising our science curriculums at the middle school, and focusing on the sixth grade, so you have sixth grade teachers, pardon me, and seventh grade teachers that are focusing on so that we have a transition. Math in grades, go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is then maybe not necessarily rewriting, this is more of a transition team kind of?
Well, at the elementary level, the, the standards by which we have to have our curriculum developed by are changing in a different pace than they are at the Board of Education level. So, what, what's slowly but surely happening, for lack of a, for a very simple way of explaining it, is the sixth grade in both of the elementary districts is becoming more and more middle school-like, and what's happening is we're trying to have the teachers from the middle school actually participate with sixth grade teachers to make sure that there's a better transition for students, and that the, you know, particular content areas are covered effectively, that there's no gaps, and the others to no, you know, redos or repeats, which you find on a fairly regular basis.
Okay, all right.
In the math, in particular, the, the elementary districts, the phase in for the 2011 standards, this year it was K through 2 and high school, and, and K through 2 actually had to have it in place, high school is for September, and then the other elementary grades, 3, 4, 5, and 6, they'll be phasing in over the next couple of years. So, what you see here is grades 3 and 4 at the elementary districts, and then up for us at the eighth grade level, then Algebra II, pre-calculus, and trigonometry. And you can see from your counts that some of the money is local funds, that's 15, some of the money is tri-district, that's 70, and there will be some additional items that'll come forward at future agendas, because all of the elementary curriculum work has not been defined yet, all of the people who are gonna be involved have not been identified, so you'll see, there'll be a couple more resolutions coming forward that will focus on that. And except for, you know, any minor changes at the district level, this is the extent of our, our work for the, for the seventh through 12th grade.
So this work, when I look at the math at the high school level, like Algebra II, pre-calculus, calculus, we're not looking at rewriting the curriculum per se, it's more of, again, some changes in terms of implementation, pacing guides.
And making sure all the standards are there, because remember, we're, we're also transitioning at the secondary level to the common core. So, what you're also doing is looking to make sure that there's no overlooked, we didn't overlook any standards, you know, we haven't updated, but you're not looking at a whole full-scale rewrite of a curriculum, obviously with six hours, you're not gonna accomplish that.
Okay, so other than the first part, which is the freshman physics workshop, that is the only actual training, other than that, this is all, oh, well, no, I guess maybe with the facilitator for science, that looks like maybe some training as well.
Well, that's a staff member, that's a staff member who's gonna be responsible for making sure that, you know, all the work is done, that's the.
Oh, that's a staff member?
Right, that's a person on site. We're not paying anybody to offer the class to our, our, excuse me, our science teachers, they're just going to the class that has a tuition attached to it of $1,000.
Right, well, the first one.
Right.
The rest, though, is pretty much in-house.
Staff members.
Staff members working together to make changes, okay, thank you.
Anything else on item number eight, 16? Tom, roll call, please.
Roger?
Second, please.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Angel.
Yes. May I have a motion on item number nine, one, it is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the submission of the 2012-13 District Professional Development Plan.
Roger, I'm gonna second that. Any discussion on item number nine, one, Dot, since you pulled it?
I just had a quick question about it, when, when is this due in, Patrick?
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Oh, okay, well, that proceeds my secondary question, I think I had brought up that maybe some of the goals could be a little stronger in here, and I thought maybe there might be time to send it back to the committee, but I guess not, so, I guess there's nothing more I can say about that.
Well, we talked about it before, that it's not that we approve it as a matter of course.
Right.
But we have no input.
Little, little input.
Right, I understand there's little input, it's just that typically, you go from here to here, you look at the goal from the prior year, you wanna be able to say, did you make it or not, and, and the way it's written, it's a little hard to say, some of these are actually in development, so it's hard to say what the target is, we're trying to, the district, not us, but the district is trying to get there.
Any other discussion on item number nine, one? Yes, Tom, roll call then, please. Roger? Yes. Stephanie?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dot?
I would maybe like to have had some way to review this sooner, so maybe we could have passed on some input about that, so I think I'll abstain at this point.
Michael?
I'm abstaining because if we're not supposed to have much input, or little input, I don't know why I'm voting on it, so I'm just gonna say.
Vito?
Yes.
Angel?
Yes. They have, excuse me, the motion on item number, Roman numeral 11, four, as stated, regards to the financial report for April and the line item transfers.
Next motion.
Claudia? Seconded.
Seconded.
Michael? Any discussion on these items?
Tom, roll call, please. Roger?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dot?
No, I'd like to abstain at this time.
Don?
No, I'd like to abstain at this time.
Michael?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes. Yes. I printed this this time. They have a motion on item number Roman numeral 11, 15, be it resolved that the River Dell Board of Education members will abide by the New Jersey School Board Member Code of Ethics as per the enclosed, which we have copies of.
Motion?
Motion? Nobody wants to abide by the ethic? I will make a motion. I'm making that motion.
For the record, I'm voting no, because I don't believe in policies.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll continue speaking. That I think we have our own ethics policies that we've done here, and frankly, either you abide by general decorum or no. So I don't believe in this.
It's a no.
Well, we have a voting.
Yeah, it isn't no, but...
Sorry.
Tom, any other discussion on this item?
He's not abiding by anybody's.
I don't, yeah, well, you know I don't abide by that.
In discussion, just as, like you said before, I'm probably going to vote no against this, like Michael did, he's not really voting right now, he's saying that, I will, you know what, we could have waited till the roll call, and then Roger could have explained it. However, it was discussion, he is entitled to tell us why. He may be voting no, because it may, you know, it may affect some other people in discussion, which is why we would have it. So, Michael?
And just to clarify, this is the New Jersey School Board Member Code of Ethics. This is not the state code, you know, for board member code of ethics.
The New Jersey.
The same.
No, but this is from the New Jersey School Board Member, okay, this is the same?
The same.
It's the one we've already signed off on, that we have to comply with?
Correct.
And so this is sort of like the extra nail and the claw thing?
Yeah, that's why I don't understand how, I thought we as board members had to agree to this, so why is...
But because the election moved, you know, these are all the things that we did, and the new members would have signed it again, and we would have all, but now we're not signing it again, because we're not at a new election.
We just...
All right. So can you continue as a board member without agreeing to this, is what I'm asking?
Who? Yes. Yes. We agreed, we also, if you go back, maybe I'm, maybe I'm, I want to make sure I understand the question. We agreed that we would have like the board norms and apply to our own ethics and all too? I would, that's, okay, I just make sure that we're on the same.
My point is that we agree to our own norms, which may be contrary to this, or may not be contrary to this. So why do we have to abide by something enforced to us, as opposed to something that we've agreed on as our own board locally?
Well, we agree on those norms in conjunction with the code of ethics.
Our norms are on top of the code of ethics.
Can I just say one other thing? I actually did look up the difference between them. The only thing is, this, what was presented to us was our actual board policy, which is, goes back a ways. There were just two additional items that were added, that are not part of the state requirements. And one was something about we would treat each other mutually with respect, and the second one was, I don't know if anybody, I don't have an electronic device, I can't pull them up.
I couldn't pull them.
But there were just, there were two at the very bottom, that are additional to the state requirements. But I'm not sure that you can be a board member without agreeing, at least to the first part.
There are more sticks in life that can drop in.
May I? May I?
Yeah, sure.
Whether you agree by vote or not to the code of ethics, you're bound by them. You can't, you can't not abide. The requirement is that you be trained in them. And that requirement is then verified through the CUSAC process, and verified through an annual compliance document that Tom's office completes. The second issue is that what you're seeing on this agenda is a few items that would normally appear at a reorganization meeting, but since we are, we moved the election, and the reorganization meeting will now continue, now take place in, in January, we have to bridge the gap from now to January. There are other items, which you had on your organization agenda, which you approved on through the next reorganization meeting, so your, that resolution carries. So not every item that you had on a reorganization meeting appears here, but the items that don't automatically carry through your repeating. Michael? Go ahead.
By statute that they pass, our term has been extended, the term of this board, from when it started, right until December 31st. Including all the resolutions that we passed and voted on, including when we voted on the board ethics before. So I, I don't see, from my point of view, why it requires another reaffirmation at this point, nor, for that matter, the policies. But if you did the policies, this is one of the policies. By voting for the policy, you voted for this. So I'm, just personally, I think once or twice is enough, so I'm just going to go and abstain on, on this one.
The reason it, it needs to be a distinct item, because it's audited as a distinct item. It's not audited as a part of your policy. When they did CUSAC on Friday, they actually said, can I see the vote on, they want your reorganization agenda meeting, and you'll go through it, you had to give it to them. So...
Don't they also ask for our individual things as well?
Tom sends that in as a different report, and they did a desk audit on that material, so...
Any other discussion on abiding by the code of ethics? Tom, can I get a roll call then on item number 1115?
Roger?
I'll stay.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Paul?
I will abide.
Don?
I'm in on this, I'm abiding, yes.
Michael?
I'm abstaining, because I don't understand why you're voting again.
Vito?
Yes.
Go.
I'm just going to make one comment before this. Because you know what we do, we do a, a, a board of, the code of ethics and all too. One thing I kind of agree with Roger, is you know what, we've got all these policies and all too, it should come down to two words, or three words, do the right thing. If you do the right thing, that should be, that should be the whole policy, just do the right thing. But, since it's in here, it's part of it, yes. Okay. May I have a motion on item number 1125, be it resolved that the board reappoint the firm of McKinley White and Company at the successor name of Smol and Lupin, at an annual current salary of $26,000 for the 2011-12 school year?
Make motion.
Claudia? Stephanie? Discussion on this item?
Just the only discussion I would have is, they're the auditors, right?
Yes.
Is it, can we put the word that there are auditors in there? Or am I not reading this clearly enough? We reappoint them as our auditor, that, you know, not just the company.
Why don't we just say McKinley White and Company?
School orders.
The districts.
How about reappoint the auditing firm of...
Sure.
That's good.
And to that, I would just add my normal comment that I do every time of the year, and I say, wouldn't it just be prudent to, now and then, switch an auditor for a year, just to have a different set of eyes?
I will gladly comment on that one, because, you know what, I actually happen to know the firm Smol and Lupin, they're in New Jersey, and actually have offices down in Florida as well. And being in a situation of CPA, a partner in a firm, and I got to tell you something, this is probably the best thing for us, because this is, you know what, we're getting the best of both worlds, in my humble opinion. Because of the fact that we have people who will still be part of it, and also knowing Smol and Lupin doesn't do, like some firms do, nothing but school budgets or school, excuse me, school audits or municipal audits. Smol and Lupin doesn't do as, as many as some of the other firms. So they're going to have their people on these auditor, the McKinley and White guys, they're going to be all over it, learning it, and wanting to make sure that it, all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, that this, it's almost as if having a new firm. That's my humble opinion, what is going to happen, and that's just, like you said, it'll be great, we'll have the best of both worlds, we'll have people who've been here who kind of know things, and people double-checking them.
Right. The history.
The history, and then a new, holding them to a, to a standard.
Sure.
So, Tom, roll call?
Roger?
Yes, however, for five years, of name change only? Yes.
The next one, you can talk about.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Michael?
The name's new, yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes. They have a motion on item number 1126, be it resolved that the board appoint the firm of Smol and Lupin at an annual current salary of $26,000 effective July 1st, 2012 to June 30, 2013, for the 2012-13 school year.
Make motion.
Claudia?
Can we add that word auditing?
Yes, use the same word auditing before firm?
Thank you.
Paul seconded that.
Paul seconded.
Discussion, I'm sorry, Tom?
Yeah, two quick questions. The first one, why, why is this board authorizing this now, if it's not effective until July 1st, 2012? Aren't we binding a future board? Why, why are we voting on this? Shouldn't it be the successor board that votes on it? And second, is the fee correct? I think it's supposed, according to the memo, I thought it was 26,500 for that year.
We don't change until when?
So that's the 2012-13 year. But I really don't think we can vote on this, because I don't know, we can, can we authorize multi-year contracts? This, that's what it looks like we're trying to do here. And I don't think we could bind a future board.
This board isn't...
It is not future.
This is, this board isn't going to be seated till after January of this year, that would, that would be able to bind this.
We're authorizing payment for...
The school year starts June, July 1st, 2012.
The school year that, but the board now is not in sync.
We are the existing board.
As we weren't even in sync before.
So we are the existing board?
We are the existing board.
Okay. And is the fee correct?
If it's 26,500, I'd rather approve it for 26.
I'm fine with that too, but, you know, I thought I read...
As a free excuse to go back to saying sorry, the board only approved your 26,000.
Yeah, we'll change to 26,500.
Was I right?
Yes.
Okay, good, I don't want to...
Their letter says 26,500.
Thank you.
And Tom, I got to ask a question.
Don, don. Well, 26,000. Fee for this year is going to be 26,000. Okay? And they raise it about $500 for next year. Any other, roll call, Tom? Roger?
Yes, however, for five years, I've been requesting a new set of eyes as auditors, that I think it's just good in general to have that practice. But McKinley does a decent job, so I do support their contract.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Michael?
No, for the reasons stated.
Vito?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes. Wow. That brings us to item number 12, items for poor discussion and decision. Or some old business and new business, if you want to bring up the item you mentioned before, just since it's, since it's on top of my head.
I'd like to move that all official notices of the school district be published on our website.
A discussion on this item?
Thank you.
No problem.
My comment just is that in our continuing desire to outreach to the community, it's, you know, our best interest. Newspaper circulation has been declining double digits every year, and, you know, I think one day the web will become the primary deliverer of information.
One day.
If it isn't already.
You miss a lot when you don't look at the paper.
Hmm?
You miss a lot when you don't look at the paper. You don't, those little ancillary articles that you might not have read.
Any other discussion then, on the, on the motion? Tom, since, can you read it back, just to make sure everybody knows, or which you wrote down?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That all official notices of school district, of the school district be published on our website. Okay? Michael made the motion, Roger seconded. Okay. So you're good?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just looking at...
Okay, roll call, please. Roger?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Claudia?
I have one question. We have been doing this all along, correct? This is our policy?
It's, we, we do this.
We do this.
This is standard operating procedure.
Right, we, you're memorializing a practice that we do.
Paul?
Sure.
Don? Michael?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Andrew?
Sure, because, like you said, it's something that we do all the time. Anyway, other than those, so I'm okay with it too. Any other, I, Don?
Yeah, I, Patrick, I wanted to ask if you could update all of us on what's happening with the, the job scenario for the new teachers that are coming on board?
Sure.
I was, as you know, I was trying to find them. Can you just tell us when they're posted and what's going to happen next?
Yeah, we, we advertised for the anticipated openings, the dates escaping me, but I believe it was two, two Sundays ago, in the official newspapers. We also had it on the website, it's not on the website anymore, because the posting closed on Friday, May 11th. So, you know, when we post something, we can put up a sunset, it just automatically goes off when it's not in effect. So we've been collecting our applications that have been coming to us, either through regular mail or online. And as a matter of fact, earlier today, I notified the administrators that the posting had closed, that the applications were in the office and prepared and ready to go. Some people have come in and picked up already. We've had, I would say, a very good turnout on the, on the app, on the process. We, we haven't done an official count of which position got the most, but we think that it's a, that social studies and special ed are running neck and neck in the number of applications that have come in. Each position has garnered, you know, well over 50, and in some cases, it's like 150, but each of them has garnered one over, over 50, and they're in the process of, or they're beginning the process of culling through the piles, and then they're going to start the interview process and bring them to me. I've notified them. When the board meetings are, my goal would be to have them, the, excuse me, new staff approved on, I think our meeting is June 18th, the last meeting in June. That's when I would like to see them all done, but we'll see what happens at that point.
Good. Can I ask those?
Once you get to your top, I don't know, four or five, whatever, will you be asking them to do model lessons? Will there be a committee approach? Like what, what happens at that phase? Is there any input from other faculty members? Or do you bring in, some schools bring in parents and whatnot? How, how are you approaching this?
Yeah, our, our standard process that we employ when school is in session, and there's a difference between when school is in session and isn't, is that the principal or the administrator who's in charge, if you will, will go through the entire process. Sometimes they'll have another set of eyes on it. I'll talk specifically about the tri-district position in a minute. And they will generally have more than two, there's generally another administrator and And they will generally have more than two or, uh, there's generally another administrator and perhaps a, a content area teacher that sits in on interviews. Doesn't happen all the time that the content area teacher's there, but that can be just because of timing and whatnot. And then when school's in session and we are in a position where we can, uh, have a demo lesson, they'll come in and teach a demo lesson.
So that might happen just because of the timing.
Correct. And then, well, then with that occurs, after that point, the administrative group usually gives me uh, two or three, uh, candidates that I then interview. And I usually interview them, uh, by myself. Sometimes I interview them with the, uh, with the administrator in charge. And they all have to go through the Mickey and Sue litmus test in my office. Exactly.
That's it, Michael.
Uh, this is for Patrick to take an update. Uh, we're having a town hall.
Yep. On June 4th.
June 4th.
How are you, how is the word being get out that is being put out there?
Once we finish this, this meeting, we will, you know, do a couple of email blasts, put it up on the, uh, website for everybody to see. But once, thankfully, we have a little bit of time. But once we get through tonight, then there's no other meeting than that. So everything will be all about that meeting.
Okay, Michael? If you wouldn't mind, since we are, thank you, kind of talk about that a little bit more? Just kind of say what it is?
Oh, what?
Just, yeah, since we asked about it, just.
The genesis of a town hall meeting, at least in my mind, was that, uh, there's a certain procedure that happens during a board meeting. And some of that procedure is not conducive to a give and take, a question and answer between the people who show up and the board members. We have our own work to get done and it's kind of regimented. A town hall format would be more of a give and take, more of, if there's questions, we would try and answer the board members, speaking on their own behalf, because we're not voting, would be able to respond hopefully to those questions. And it would be more of, you get an answer or at least a sense of where we're at. We get a sense of where you're at. And it's in a real-time basis opposed to, well, we'll get back to you or speak to somebody separately later on.
Okay. No, thank you. Kind of clears that up. Stephanie?
I have the, um, club report and, and coaching staff and everything.
Coaching has been advertised. Oh, I forgot, I forgot the CNI, thanks, as soon as you said that. Uh, coaching staff positions have been advertised. I anticipate those appointments before the end of the year as whatever we have in. And the coaching, I mean, the, the club report generally is about, uh, the first week of June. I generally get it.
And that's going to be the summary of the year, you know, the full-blown?
Right.
Okay.
I, I forgot to add the CNI position. The CNI position's a little different because what's happened is that the three superintendents have taken, uh, the 42 different applications that we had and have gone through them and identified our picks. We're interviewing three candidates on Wednesday and then another three candidates, um, a, a week from Thursday. And, uh, hopefully at that point, we'll be at a position where we can recommend back to the tri-district group, which is what we've done in the past. We recommended a candidate back and had a, we, it took a little doing, but we scheduled a, um, a meeting where there were representatives from each of the three boards at that meeting to, uh, to go through the final candidates. So that's what we're, we're hoping to do. Should we, meaning the three superintendents, not come to a point where we have a, a candidate to bring forward, then we'd be in a position of re-advertising before we would come back to the, to the boards.
Are you guys interviewing all at the same time or separately?
Yes, all three of us meet together and interview.
Okay.
And the first ones, as I said, are Wednesday.
Dot?
Um, could we just get a, a listing, Patrick? Now that we've kind of seen where our students are placing for next year, with all the changes in the science department, it looks like the teachers have been identified for physics. But I know there's a lot of changes. We're going to have to move our biology staff over to somewhere. Can you give us a breakdown, send a memo out to the board, kind of identifying for us where people are being moved within their certifications and all that kind of thing?
I, I can tell you equivocally right now that all teachers are teaching inside their certification. There was, uh, there was no, uh, first off, we didn't get the waiver. Secondly, we didn't need it. We were able to assign the, in particular, the three biology teachers within their certifications for next year, so we don't have. There, well, it says teacher biology. They're allowed to teach, uh, five or six subjects. So we, and we offer a number of those subjects who are able to fit them without, everyone's teaching inside certification.
Could I throw something out? Just, it's been a little pet peeve I mentioned before, I think either you, Asher here. In our, in our electronic, um, agendas and whatnot?
Mm-hmm.
Is it, can you guys look? And again, this is just a little, just a nuance. Do we have all of our attachments at the bottom? Is there any way that we can actually kind of include a link next to the, next to the darn, um, agenda items? So you're not coming back and forth? It's just a little bit easier to read as you're going through?
I don't know.
Possibly?
I don't know.
Okay. Nothing, if it's possible, great. If not?
Right.
It's just easier.
Like I said, if they could make a hyper.
No, there's not a motion. It was just a suggestion.
Okay, I'd like to second the suggestion.
All right.
That they, you know, see, I think for the hypertext link right now.
Yeah, it just would be kind of easy because then you're kind of looking at the Roman numerals and trying to sort this stuff.
It don't match up exactly.
All right, yeah.
So we said one on the bottom.
Yeah. Well, because, because I's come before V's and everything else and it doesn't, it's not numerically correct. Any other items for discussion? Dot?
Um, yeah, the other thing I just kind of want to follow up on. Earlier this year, we, we had a great presentation by Ms. Ali on a lot of, uh, some of the, the programming with the math department, things that are changing and whatnot. And we were also given some, uh, data, some information as to where our students were placing. Um, and I was just wondering if we could get a projected update for next year? How many students are falling into the survey track, the other tracks? I'm also kind of curious, how are we placing our students in calculus, AP versus honors? I just, um, a little curious. When, when sometimes I look online at the numbers, I look at the number of students who test out at the AP level in calculus at our district versus other districts. I don't know why. The number seems a little low on a percentage type basis and I'd like to get some more feedback in terms of how we're placing our students, where, where they're going, what their interests are and kind of get some updates on that.
When you say where they're going, you mean existing students, what the classes are going to take next year?
Existing students, what they, they're scheduled for, for next year.
Okay, fine. Do, we, we notify our staff, but contractually, we notify our staff as to their, um, retention by May 15th. That's tomorrow. Uh, we will be distributing our, our, uh, contracts to the persons that were on this, in the previous motions. And then, um, June 1st, we have to let them know their teaching assignments. So we, you know, by middle of June, we should know pretty much where we're at.
I, I guess a corollary to this, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm looking a little bit here at math. Are we having, um, maybe you could include the rubric in there as to how students are placed in the upper level sections? Are we having any concerns with students not being placed appropriately or questions coming out from parents? Why my child did or didn't get into a particular.
Well, we always have, we always have parents, you know, questioning a recommendation and there's al, there's always an override that goes on.
But no.
And in every subject there, it's not just math, in every subject there. When there's placement into an honors class or a, um, AP program or Sup, uh, well, Supa really doesn't have it, but when you're placed into an honors level or above class, um, there's always questions.
Yeah, I was hearing a couple rumblings, you know, I always drag people back to the school. I'm assuming they're all settled by now, but just kind of curious.
Well, I can tell you nothing's risen to my office regarding this.
Okay.
Michael?
Yeah, um, I was just curious. Would it be possible, would it be feasible, a problem?
If we had on our website as well as other information, where our graduate students are going to? I mean, not the name of the student, but for example, we get somebody in Harvard or Yale or Bergen Community or whatever.
Our graduating students and, okay.
What?
They're graduating students?
Graduating students. Where they are for this year, where they wind up. Because first of all, it'd be kind of nice, uh, to see where they're going. Second of all, for those parents who are about to apply, it'd be nice to know where students from Riverdale have been successful before.
Can we do something like that?
Is there something? I know you, from time to time, you give me, you give us.
We do, uh, there are, there are three ways that there's a notification that already, that exists. The first one is the last edition of the Redalian, which is the, uh, coveted issue of the Redalian. Is.
Get my copy.
Is, because it also has other reflections in it for seniors. So, uh, it's not just all about the schools, but there's a complete list in there. We list them completely on the graduation program and then we list them completely on the school profile as to what they go into. And the school profile is on the web.
The school profile is on the web?
On the web.
I think so.
Okay. And that lists all the graduates for that particular year and where they're going to? Not the people, but I mean where they're going to.
Right. It goes, it lists all the schools that kids went, accepted to.
By like how many people went to the school? No, just that they, somebody went to that.
Correct.
Is it possible to, how many kids go to that school? To kind of get a feeling that we have like five or six or 10 kids?
I mean, we know that, but, we know that, but, you know, if you.
Because then you get an idea of where the majority of our students go to. Or where, you know, where, not the majority, but where plurality go here and there. 10 kids go there, one kid goes there.
Well, I mean.
It's sort of a feedback as to how the school is really doing and also gives an idea that if 10 kids are going to one school, that may be like, not a safe school, but that may be a place you want to apply to.
Right, but we, we give those, we give that to the students along the way. I mean.
Right.
So I'm asking, why can't it be on the website?
I don't think it's, quite frankly, I don't think it's useful information on the website. I don't think it's, I don't think you should be making a decision on which schools you're going to apply to based upon the fact that, you know, 15 kids from Riverdale went there. That's, that's not a good reason to apply to a school.
All right, let me give another argument, that if 15 of our kids go to Harvard, it'd be great to know that.
If 15 of our kids went to Harvard.
Then you would put it up.
No, you would know it. You would, you would know it. I mean, generally speaking, we have a spattering of Ivies. We have a, a, a spattering of what I would call tier two. We would have, uh, uh. Lehigh.
A little inside joke there.
A little inside joke. And I should point out that our association president, who's not here to defend herself, also is a graduate of Lehigh.
Cause, cause like, you know what, I guess more.
But it's also, it's in a vacuum because, because it's where people choose.
Thank you, I was just going to say that because we had, we had one.
We can't tell them where to apply.
We had one representative here though that got accepted into about seven or eight different, or maybe 100. So I don't remember how many, but quite a few prestigious schools. So do you list all of them? Because then, you know, just because, just because if I had a choice of going to Harvard, Yale, Princeton, Lehigh, Lafayette, and I chose, I chose, you know, um, Ithaca College because that's, you know, because, because five other kids from Riverdale went there, that doesn't, that necessarily reflection on.
From, from my point of view, it could be, of course, I'd like to get something out there because I am for transparency, getting more information out. I would take it either where they got accepted, the number who got accept, who got accepted to schools or the, where they wound up going, just as a feedback.
That's on the program.
I don't disagree with that, but in Naviance, when the students look at Naviance, they see past graduates, when they look at whatever school it is, Lehigh, and they can see what GPA they had, what SAT scores they had and whether they were accepted by Lehigh. And that would be more useful to our students on where to apply because they have some common goals from ex, ex-students, ex-graduates.
Dot?
Um, I, I think you're right. There is a lot of information on Naviance, but to bring up Michael's point, most of us in the community, unless you actually have a kid in the school, have no access to Naviance. However, I do know that a number of districts will allow on their website a guest pass into Naviance. I think, I don't want to name the school right now on TV, but I, I do go to other schools and I am allowed to look in and look at the different information, whether it's a scattergram or average whatever and applications and things like that. Could we maybe consider for those people in the community who are, you know, sending students yet to come to the high school or who are interested in learning more about our school and want to know what our placement record is, that we allow a guest pass, um, to Naviance on the account? No one could go in there and change data, but they can review. Oh, you had, you know, whatever situation. It's kind of very useful information.
Anthony's not here, but you know what? Personally, I'd be nervous as heck with to have guest passes and that stuff. Again, I don't know if your guest pass is actually.
It might be limited, I don't know.
Well, I don't, what I'm saying is, you know what, a guest pass now, if I got something like that, I could pass on to somebody else. So the security there would, would scare the living daylights out of me.
It's just a view mode, you're just looking at.
But even, even still, just once you, if you mode, once you're in, there's a lot, just again, just a security thing.
I've seen two different ways of doing it.
One district I'm aware of, it's just a simple guest pass when you're in.
Another just says contact the administration for a guest pass for residents. And so maybe if a resident was curious, they have a seventh grader, an eighth grader, they could contact and get for a limited time or something, a guest pass so that they could look at. I think the point of transparency, because all of this information now is in one locale, if people are interested, we have to have a way to get that information out to.
And I'm not going to say it's a bad idea because it's not a bad idea. But I have heard people here say that, you know, these, these magazines that says, you know, Riverdale went up from, from 100 to 46th in the, in the state, you know, too. He said it's kind of a beauty contest. I think some of that, part of that is the same.
Well, this is different than a ranking.
I, I, well, I, you know, but some people may look at it as a, as, you know, I, you know, it's just an opinion.
A concerned parent might really want to know this.
If there's a concerned parent, they're going to contact us. They're going to ask us. They're going to get in touch with us and, and find out about it because we tell them that. And if they're a seventh grader, they already have access to the Naviance.
I was just saying, don't you have?
All the kids have it.
Seventh and eighth graders do have access?
Uh, we, we give, uh, access beginning of the seventh grade.
And to the full module?
All the modules, so they can see that? So it would only be maybe a sixth grade parent or something? And are we allowing it by policy if someone really wanted a guest pass, um, to, to get that? I mean, I, I think even I as a board member would like a guest pass, to be honest with you.
No, we, we, no, we don't. We, we would, if someone was really interested.
They should come and see you.
In getting some information, we'd, they'd contact us and we would make sure that they got the appropriate information that they were looking for.
Just. Yeah, I'm sorry, Michael.
Um, you mentioned we're beauty contesting. You know, when you move into a town, you look where the, where the high school is sending their kids. I did. Maybe certain people on the board, I'm speaking only for myself. What's wrong with a beauty contest? What's wrong with being proud of where our kids are going to?
We are proud of it.
No, 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 I'm not saying we're not proud. But why aren't we, if, I assume we have, and what I've seen is we place our kids almost everywhere, from the Ivy League, the Bergen Community and other schools.
Right.
We have the full spectrum. What I don't understand is why it isn't something that we are affording people, attracting people to Oriddell and River Edge because they know if their kid goes to the, to Riverdale Regional High School, they have an opportunity to go to X, Y, and Z. We're not a Scarsdale, we're not a Scarsdale, which does it automatically. But I mean, we should be proud, we are proud of it and I don't see why we don't put it out there.
I, I apologize for, I'm chuckling, excuse me.
Oh, the tactic is where is.
I'm chuckling because I just, I, I've explained that we do it, we, we have three ways that we do it very commonly. One is the Redalian, one is the commencement, and the other one is the school profile, which is on the website. It's on the website. My reservation is not listing the schools, we list the schools. My reservation is, I don't, I, I don't think the information as to 15 kids went to Delaware and 47 kids went to Bergen is useful. That piece is not useful. And, and it, it goes in cycles. I mean, I, I can easily see when, as we have been in the last couple of years with an economic downturn where people have had to make a different decision on their college placement because they haven't been able to afford it, where we had a lot of kids attending Bergen who probably wouldn't attend Bergen, but their families just couldn't afford it. I don't think it, it doesn't make any difference. And what people are going to do is then look at it and say, oh, look, how many kids they sent to Bergen? They must really do be doing a crappy job. I, I don't think that piece of information is.
But then we are, we are concerned about putting it out because it might have the wrong impression.
I'm.
See, I'm confused.
See, I would think percent. I'm telling you that I don't think it's useful information is what it is. Because the subject won't let it transportation.
Then we could have different views on that because I think it would be for a parent, to me, it would be useful to note that a number of kids from, from here, 5% went there or 1% went there.
But I would think that if you said 98.7% of our kids go onto secondary, that, that's an impressive number. It was 60%.
Number two, that should be there too.
Michael, you're a parent.
It is, it is there.
People have that information on Naviance. That's, that's another area, that when you're getting ready to proceed with college search, you're going to get that information. Like Paul just said, it kind of tells you, it even tells your past students down to their SATs there, grade points, who went to Lehigh, how many are there, how many left, all that information is part of Naviance. I think that might be where you're missing, because if you're going through the college search, that's where you're gonna look for it. If you're just somebody that's moving into the community, you're gonna go on the website and you're gonna look at it.
If you're in the community, can you get on the, that's the point that-
Naviance, no, but you don't-
If they want, they can come in and get the information that they're asking for, that's what Patrick said.
But all the kids are listed, and not the kids, all the colleges are listed.
And how many come from here?
No, not how many come, not, in Naviance, yes, but on our website, in the school profile, it has all, it has all the schools.
It's a list of every school that kids got accepted to.
Now, I have, I have one thing that I brought up about the waiting, and I gave you all this, Patrick, the last time. Have you gone anywhere with that?
I've heard backs from every school except one.
Okay, because that's something that will help our students get into better schools. For what? When, when our waiting for our honors and AP classes are, from my, the information I got, which Patrick is going to check, because I really don't want to talk about it.
You mean how many credits?
From my, yes, they increase the grade by three points here. In all the other districts, Ridgewoods, Northern Highlands, it's five or six. So I gave Patrick that information. Now, I think that will help our students get into some better schools. Because then their GPA, their weighted GPA would be higher and more competitive with the Ridgewoods. No, 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 we do get into good schools, and they're listed. I just want to talk about that, I think that would help our, our children on Naviance, because they're only looking at GPAs, and they're looking at their SAT scores, weighted.
Or ACT.
Or ACT, you're correct.
Dot?
Actually, I'm not sure, well, let me say this. Looking at the waiting system and coming up with a program that we're happy with here at Riverdale, definitely should be done. But I'm not sure I can totally agree with the statement that changing the waiting system will help or hurt the case, our students, a lot of schools actually go through the process of recalculating the GPA, or try to look at the unweighted GPA as well. So it's hard to say, we're not in those admission room decisions at those various colleges. You ask those questions when you go to all those open houses and all those assemblies, and every school will give you a different answer, and some actually come out right and tell you, "We just, we calculate on our own system." So I think we should look at it, but not necessarily say that that is a reason why it prevents a student from going forward or not, or helps a student or not, we really can't control that end.
I think we should be in the same field as the other schools that we want to be competitive with.
I have no problem with doing that, I just can't say that it gives anybody an edge or not, I, we don't know.
Well, when I went to the, well, whatever, we'll get into that at a different discussion. Because I went to Buckle, Lehigh, Lafayette, and Bucknell's, and they only asked one, well, two questions.
Right.
Your weighted GPA, weighted GPA, and your SAT or ACT scores. That's all they asked.
Let's not go there.
Seems hard, you know what, let's, Roger?
Motion to adjutant.
No, no.
That's public. We have to do public.
I thought you might have had something to add there.
Roger.
But, does anybody else have any other open business? Then that actually brings us to item number-
I was waiting for that to happen, so you said that. I just wanted to inform the board, if I may. Next week, Monday-
Mother may I?
Yes, I wanted to do it the last item. Monday and Tuesday of next week, I'll be attending the New Jersey Association of School Administrators Conference, where I will be appointed Treasurer of the State, which if-
Can you divert some point?
If everything were to continue the way it would go, then I would successfully move through the chairs to ultimately have the Office of President of the State Association a couple of years down the line. So, thank you.
Great, that's representing Riverdale, we appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Now we come to item number seventeen, public comments on this meeting, items, anything you have out there? Here, you've been smiling the whole time, anything? No, all right. With that, then-
Ladies, do you want to, yeah?
Yes, go ahead.
I know that they do, they, I met with them today, so I know that the young ladies-
So if you could, just come to the microphone, identify who you are, and then smile big for RDTV.
No, it doesn't broadcast you, it just records you for inside, so you're fine.
So you just, project.
All right, so I'm Jo Daly, and I'm Ellen Brooks, and we just want to thank you for letting us speak this evening, and we are just going to talk about something that we talked about with Mr. Fletcher today. So if some of you know why we're here, for those of you who don't, we're here to speak about a potential class of Riverdale's two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school curriculum. This year, organic chemistry ran as a first-year class, and the class was very small, but also very successful. Its teacher, Mrs. Carrie Jacobus, has done a magnificent job creating the first-year class. But unfortunately, this class may not run next year, because not enough people have signed up or shown interest yet.
Our classmates and we have signed up for this course for the upcoming year. Fifteen students are required for this course to run. We have already discussed with Mr. Fletcher and Ms. Brooks the conditions needed for this class to run. We know the student requirement, and they have explained to us the hardships of creating student schedules around the singleton class. We fully understand that if this class runs, it may take away from another class, and we're well aware that as of now, there's not even enough people signed up. We understand these points of interest and technicalities, but we just want to voice our thoughts and opinions one more time.
The reason we are stressing the importance of this class is not so much because we need it to get into college. People across the nation have gotten into college easily without organic chemistry as a class. We are pushing for this class because it is something that interests us. Through our time in high school, we have developed a passion for the field of chemistry. We want to continue our excessive study in chemistry while we can. We love the topic, everything about it, and would love to explore the specific chemistry dealing with carbon-based compounds.
Correct us if we're wrong, but isn't America stressing the importance of education? Isn't our country scared of falling behind other up-and-coming nations when it comes to scientific advances? Isn't the issue of America becoming dimmer, dumber, familiar to all of us? The goal of the past few years here at Riverdale has been to increase the number of students taking advanced math classes. Shouldn't the same go for science? The few students here at Riverdale that want to learn, that want to make a challenging class, that want to be educated in something I love, are the epitome of students across America that we should be fueling and supporting. If education is such a pivotal issue, why are we being denied the ability to take a class that will only increase our intelligence?
Riverdale has always been a high school with so much to offer. We cannot deny that it is abundant in the variety of courses students take, shaping each individual who walk through their doors. As a quote from Riverdale's Program of Studies, "Our school aims to challenge students to reach their potential by nurturing each student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth. We hope that this statement holds true when considering our intellectual growth of students." Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
How many kids are in the class, or right now, did you have?
There's the class running this year?
No, did you guys anticipate-
We have eleven kids signed up right now, and I believe that fifteen is the number needed to run.
Are you recruiting? That's why they have eleven, because there were ten signed up this afternoon.
So you're doing a great job.
Yeah, smaller number, because it was the first year to run, I believe, so it didn't need a bigger, a bigger number. I'm not sure how that worked out, but it's smaller than fifteen.
I think it might be like ten or twelve.
Ten, yeah.
Could we get a recommendation for our next meeting on June fourth, to find out a little bit more about what the final number of students might be in this class, and whether or not we can handle this class? Because last year, we were able to make an exception for ten students when it came to running the pre-calculus BC. I'd like to put forth clearly a motion here, that we allow this class to run with less than fifteen, and maybe set, you know, a number somewhere around ten, as we have in the past. I see no reason not to allow these students. I'm particularly blown away by the number of kids interested in chemistry at Riverdale. Myself being a PhD chemist, I'd like to give these kids the opportunity, since it has run and it has been successful. I was a little worried, I didn't know how kids would react to organic chemistry, was a little worried about people, like, losing it somewhere along the line, but actually, it's been successful, from all accounts that I've heard of, and like to get a recommendation and a vote at our next meeting, get some more research, get some more numbers, and see what we can do for the kids.
Is that an AP course?
It's an honors weighted course, a lot of it's college material.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd just like to make one comment and all too, because we talked about great, great high scores, and AP classes, and honors, and all too. Hey, this, just, again, this is one man's opinion, I've talked about, this is the kind of stuff that I personally like and all too, because kids should be at the school to want to learn, whether it's, you know, whether it be organic chemistry, whether it be how to build that chair, you know what I mean? It's just, what you want to learn, that's what we should be about here, not necessarily about, you know, again, we want kids to always do well, but you know what? If eleven kids, if we say this class, and then all of them fail, is that, is that, if we, I'm just, I'm just, I'm making a comment. If we said, hey, this class would run, and all eleven kids just, just do terribly in this class, have we, is it a bad thing? Or is it, you know, we giving them an opportunity to learn, and that's just, again, something that I believe in. I'm in favor of, I'm in favor of kids finding out what they want to do and learn, and giving them the opportunity. I made a comment one time, was, you know, hey, I don't really care if they, if we give them a study, I'll give them an extra study, if they use that time to find out what they want to do. So just, again, one man's opinion.
So you're in favor of giving it out?
I'm in favor, the kids came here, they talked to Mr. Fletcher, he asked them to get some more information.
Wait a minute, no, I did not, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I informed the students of what their rights were, and their exhibit, and I informed them of what their meetings were, so that they could express their opinions. I did not tell them to come to the board, correct? I told them when the board meetings were. I have, you already have a recommendation from the superintendent and the principal not to run the class. And I will just remind the board that last year, when we overrode the recommendation of the administration, we find ourselves this year with only nine students signed up for BC Calculus, and I find myself in a position of saving that course, because of actions that we took at last year's board meeting, to do it, because we had ten students last year, we informed you that that would be a smaller number as the year progressed, which it has, and we're back in that same situation. There are other issues that are in here, which I've explained to the students, which means that it is, it's unlikely that even if ten students, or eleven students, express an opinion in taking the class, based upon a review of these two students, as well as the other eight at the time, their schedules, it is unlikely that that number of students will survive in the class selection process, because of the other singletons that they have chosen, is, which will limit the factor here. That's what's going to be the limiting factor. There are ten students, there were ten students who had signed up for it, there was an eleven student that came to the meeting, I have no names, but there was eleven students that came, and, and they were encouraged. I think you carried her out of the room to the guidance office in order to sign her up, right?
Thought she was signed up.
I'm teasing, I'm teasing, because they're doing what we, what we told them to do, which was to go out and do it. But I believe it is unlikely that that many students will survive the scheduling process, based upon what I, what we know about their schedules.
I, although I support exactly what you're saying, Jo, people finding out what they're doing and learning for the sake of learning, I was one of the only people who opposed running the math class last year, because I thought it set a bad precedent. And I stand here again, saying the same thing. We're making a value judgment, because there will be classes who will come along, where we'll say, oh, no, we don't think that's worthy. And I think, as a Board of Education, all education is worthy, whether it be from something like wood turning, all the way to organic chemistry. And I, you know, denying students something that they're very interested in is a, is a difficult thing, but life and even school is filled with a lot of choices. And with the, with the invention of such a large, you know, course selection, which is phenomenal, as compared to when we went to school, it, it makes it hard, it makes it hard. And, and life is also, hopefully, not short, and there's a lot of time to explore your interests, so. Although, I love that they want to do this, I, as a, I think it sets a bad precedent.
Ladies, ladies first?
I actually wanted that to be a motion, that we vote tonight to ask for a recommendation, along with all the supporting documentation from Patrick, as to what the final number of students is likely to be once course selection come about, what this would cost in terms of staffing, or supplies, or whatever, and all the nitty-gritty. I'm not asking that we make a decision tonight, but I'm asking that we vote to, to look for this recommendation from Patrick.
I don't think we have to vote, we can request it from Patrick.
Oh, okay, we can request it then, I didn't know if we had to put a motion or not. But I have to say, I honestly disagree with you, Stephanie, because that's the whole point of a Board of Education, is that when these anomalies, or these exceptions, or these desires, wants, whatever, come forth from the community, from the public, this is where they go. They go to a board of their peers to say, you know, can we do this this year? And honestly, I see a little difference between this and the pre-calculus. There was no way to predict what the fallout would be in terms of numbers the second year, from pre-calculus BC to actually taking AP Calculus BC. But in this case, it will actually run next year. It is actually going to be the course itself a terminal course, there will be no secondary part to it. So I'd like to get more information for our next meeting, and ask that it be put on the agenda.
Patrick, on top of that information, can you look at other alternatives for students in classes such as this? Whether it be, I know that we've, at Paramus, sent kids to Bergen Community College to take classes, whether it be the AP class, or calculus class, is there a super that's, that's in any of these types of things?
Those options are made available to all of the students. The only thing I want to disagree is, is we, we do have a pretty good idea of what's gonna happen with courses when students enroll in them, because we work with them every day, and historically, we know it. I sat here and told you what would happen, and now it has happened. But I find myself in a situation where, because of promises that the board made, we have to carry forward with the BC AP class, and, and had to schedule that into the process. Now, if we didn't have that class, would organic chemistry fill the slot? I don't know, but we do have, your administration has a pretty good understanding of what happens. We have a pretty good idea of what happens when the number of students as small as this enroll in a class.
Michael?
Yeah, Patrick, my understanding, I could be wrong, is that the, the major liability associated with these classes, running them or not, is the cost of the class. Is there something beyond, is there something besides, I'm not saying besides the cost of the class.
Yes, I've explained to these students, and other students, that if these types of classes run, they may be in a position where they have to make other choices to come out of a class, or that's already in their schedule, or it may affect enrollment in, in, in the, other classes that are small. It's not, it's not a zero-sum game, as I explained, I'll use the analogy I used for these students. It's not clean where is a, a ninth period of the day, where you're just gonna say, okay, everybody come at three oh five, who wants to take the class? Because it's mathematically, when a class is chosen, it eliminates a whole host of other choices that they have to make, and the scheduling program tries to accommodate the most number of students, it tries to satisfy the most requests that are made by students.
But I'm still hearing that the major, that, besides that, we're giving a choice, more choices to the students, who then may choose not to do something else, that it's the cost of either their program being funded with small population, or because they go to that class, some other class isn't funded. But to me, from the board point of view, can, it would seem the thing we should focus on, can we, as a district, afford to do something like that? And, and the question is, if we want to do it, can we afford to do it? To that, I think we need some information on how much something like that would cost us.
It's unlikely, what I'm telling you is that it is unlikely, with this small population of students, based upon the other choices that they have made in their schedules, that we will be able to accommodate the eleven students that have signed up as of today. I suspect that if we ran the, the profile, you would end up with six or seven kids who don't have a conflict in their schedule, already. That's what our experience is saying to you, that it's not a clean zero-sum game, that it is unlikely, that even though they have requested the class, that it will be granted. This is only an expression of their interest. It's a good expression, and I'm very proud of the students for coming today, and expressing themselves, and I, I'm assuming it's on behalf of the other students that were with us today. But it's unlikely that that will happen. It's not the first time I've met with students, it's not the first time that classes have run here, it's not the first time that classes have not run here, this is not uncommon.
But to me, it still comes down to money, whether we want to spend the money for a class, whatever that cost, I don't know what the cost is, for six kids, though. Do we want to offer that type of superior, I mean, to me, organic chemistry is right up there with, you know, physics, and the other higher sciences, insofar as saying, we got a class in that, we're able to do it.
We don't do that now, we don't do that now, not every AP class runs every year. They run in cycles, because there's not enough enrollment. Not every super class runs every year, because there's not enough enrollment. It's got nothing to do with these students here, it's just a simple fact, not every class runs every year. And if, if money was absolutely no object, you could run classes for six, but that's not gonna happen, it's not gonna happen.
I guess I'm unsure about our scheduling process and how it works. Is there, are you saying there's no way by the end of, well, whatever, it's not even next week, it's, our next meeting isn't until, what, June fourth?
Right.
That by June fourth, we would have, I mean, this practically the end of the school year, that we wouldn't have an idea as to what scheduling options these students have decided to take, and whether it is six, or-
That's what he's talking about.
Why, why would we know?
But that's what I'm telling you, Dot, I'm telling you that.
Why wouldn't we know that by June fourth? If we ask these students-
I'm telling you that, I'm telling you now, that it's unlikely that if you get, unless there- there were twenty-five students that signed up for the class, I'm telling you now that it is unlikely that that many students, ten or eleven students, will survive the scheduling process without another conflict. I'm telling you that right now.
When are those conflicts identified to the students?
Right now. They're being pulled down now. That's why they're here. That's why they're here. They were told that the class isn't going to run.
By June, but let's just put the scenario in place. By June 4th, can we ask these students to caucus amongst themselves to make sure that eleven is the number? Maybe there's four more kids who don't even know about this yet, or three or more kids, whatever.
Dot, you said there's eleven kids.
Hang on, Dot. I've done scheduling.
And they choose their eight classes. When he schedules in all the seven other classes, the stories don't align for the eleven, because one may only have period three open.
One may have period seven open.
And then you go back to the student and you say, what do you want? Three or eleven, or what, you know, organic chemistry or calculus or whatever. I'm just asking, can we get some more information? Because right now, it's all kind of possible, but it's still not ironed out. I don't know what the choices would be if these students were asked, you want to pick this or pick that? I'd like to get some feedback as to what realistically the scheduling looks like, the numbers, and if they are forced to make a decision, which do they prefer?
But that's not your decision, Dot. That's not your decision.
No, no, I'm asking to get some feedback.
But it's not just realistically. We told them. What did we tell you when Ms. Brooks and I met with you this afternoon? What did we ask you to do?
Was it about our schedules?
About other students.
Recruit more?
Well, we told you that ...
Well, basically, you told us that like if we even have enough kids, like there's not really a chance that it's going to run.
What did, what, we told you that, Ms. Brooks actually said to you that you could, because I think one of the other students, the one that, I know their names, I'm not going to say them, but the student that was sitting right next to me at the meeting, he said, I'm going to go, we're going to go out and get the rest of the kids. And Ms. Brooks said to you, go ahead, good luck, correct? We told them already what to do.
And we don't want to give these students two weeks to come back to us and make sure that that is in fact the answer?
Why? What involved ...
I'm losing this, I guess, I'm saying, I understand the scheduling conflicts. It was probably the same situation this year, but maybe more students were interested. I'm just asking, can we nail some of this down so that I have some numbers, some data to look at? Is it three, five, six, eleven? I don't know what the answer is. Once they ultimately make their choices, given the options they have to pick from.
Patrick's giving you a scenario of his best interest. I've done scheduling, okay, and usually if it's singletons, which are the hardest things to schedule, because you have to fit those firsts. And that's where the conflicts come in. So, and I'm just going to give you an estimate. Patrick, you can either disagree or agree. When we had twenty students and a bunch of singletons, with all the conflicts and giving it back to the students to decide which they wanted and what periods, because they all intertwine, they're not like a ninth period like Patrick's saying. It went from twenty down to fifteen, twelve to fifteen. And this is a group of eleven right now, whether they can get more or not, it's still going to end up being a lower number than where they are of an interest.
And it may well be. I'd like to see what that number is. So give these kids a couple of weeks. I can't imagine from when they had a meeting today till tonight at 9:30 that they've been able to get all the word out. Maybe they have. I don't know.
Scheduling has gone on since, what, March?
I'd just like to get some more feedback, and then we discuss it again on June 4th. That's all I'm asking.
What I'm trying to tell you is that this is not a board decision. The students came here at this point because for, I don't want to put words in your mouth, and I don't, this is not meant in any way, they want you to guarantee that this class is going to run. And we're not at, we're not at any position where that's going to happen because we haven't finished with our scheduling process yet. We told them that the class is not going to run. We met with them today. They said they would go out and see if they could find other students to come to it. They're going to do what they're going to do. This is not a decision for the board at this time.
Well, wait a minute. I just want to be clear on this. Whether or not it runs based on population is definitely not a board decision. A board decision, though, to allow the class to run with a smaller number of students is a board decision. That can be done on this board. I'm not saying we should or shouldn't. I'd just like more information to make that decision. We can, he will make a recommendation, we either agree with his recommendation or disagree with his recommendation. The board does have the right to allow that class to run with fewer than fifteen students. We do have the power to make that decision. So that can be handled here. Whether or not it populates, that I don't know. I'd like to get some more information.
Patrick?
Yes.
Do the students have any more time to try to get more students? Or is that closed right now?
I'm going to say ...
You just gave them that. You told them to go recruit.
There were ten students, there were ten students, not at our meeting, there were ten students who had signed up for the meeting. The ladies are now telling me there's eleven, because someone got up for the meeting and went over to guidance to sign up. So yes, they're still doing that.
And they can still do it? It's still open?
Yes. I want to thank you both.
I was wondering, like, is there any way you could just put it in and I could see, like, what class I would have to drop? Because there are other classes that like I am willing to drop and take, like, organic chemistry, because most of us are going to be seniors. My other classes we signed up for aren't in for issues of interest.
Didn't Ms. Brooks pretty much tell you that this afternoon?
Not really. She made a word of it, it's going to be the number of ways to ask.
Well, she pretty much said it's, that it's unlikely that running the scenario is going to, that there's going to, it's going to conflict out of some of the students. I said that to you today. That's because that's what we do. That's because that's what we have to do. That's what we do. We look at that to see what's going to happen.
So, correct me, they don't know what the scenario is? In other words, if the student here is asking what she has to drop, I'm asking that we work the next two weeks to let these kids know so that they're giving us some feedback. Because maybe there is something they signed up for just because it was on the form or whatever, I don't know how the process worked, that maybe they have less of an interest in than taking organic chemistry. And those are the kind of numbers, let's just, let's just run the numbers. Let's just get the data. Let's just see what the scenario ...
Dot, I'm trying to tell you that we do do that. We do do that, okay? That's how we know these questions. We know these answers ahead of time.
Well, then why, why was that question just asked? I'm not trying to believe in this point, but I'm really getting confused here.
Well, but does she be willing to maybe drop some ...
And maybe other students.
But that's what you do with your guidance council.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I want that feedback on June 4th.
But that's not your business. That's, that's an individual and their parents and their guidance council.
I want the feedback to know if this board should make a decision to go with or against the recommendation to run this class. That's what I'm trying to get some feedback on.
There's not been a recommendation to vote on.
Well, I'm asking for one on June 4th. That's what I'm asking for, an agenda item on June 4th and a decision made on June 4th by this board.
So wait a second. Let's just say everything pans out and there's four kids. You want Patrick to put up that we're going to approve organic chemistry?
No, I'd like some data.
But she wants to say not recommending it, and she wants to possibly override.
I'd like some data so that we know what the interest level is, and then maybe the board will set a cutoff or something, but I want this discussed with further information, and I want the students to have further information so that they know, if they were given the choices of two different classes, which one do they prefer? Is there really maybe ten kids or eleven kids? Maybe there isn't. Maybe when they see that they'd have to give up calculus B.C., they want calculus B.C. over organic chemistry. I'm just saying, I'm sitting here, and I really don't know what the, what the numbers are, what the data is. And I'm just asking for more information and that the board vote on this on June 4th.
What happens over the summertime as the numbers go down?
Maybe we have to set a cutoff. We may be set, if this number is maintained on September, like we did the last time, maybe that's the way to go. I'm just saying, I'd like more information because I don't really know what I'm looking at here.
Michael?
I think when Patrick said that he's run, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, Patrick, when he ran and he knows what the situation is, I think from, he's saying that based on experience and doing the programming and having just gone through a lot of it, I don't think he's saying that he actually ran it like a test scenario with organic chemistry in there and then saw what everything happened. Am I right about that, Patrick?
You are correct.
Okay. And I think what the, what the young students here are asking is, is it even feasible to run something like that? And I would put it in Patrick's lap, I mean, by feasible, I mean if it's, I would say economical on most business things, but I mean, it's a lot of work to, do you have a computer program that you could stick in organic chemistry in this hour or something and see if these ten kids had anything?
Sure.
What?
Sure. Absolutely.
You could do something like that?
I would say that's what I think he's actually said that they've done. I don't think he's denying these, I think it's great that they're asking for it, but ...
Joe, he's not saying that. I don't think he's saying that.
I think what he's saying is, I'll run it again.
Look, you want me to prove it. You want me to prove it to you, okay? That's what you want me to do. You want me to prove it to you, I'll be happy.
Is it a lot of work?
No, Mike, it's not a lot of work. I mean, it's just, it's just going to tie up a whole ton of people to do this.
Oh, no, no, no. That's a lot of work.
It's not a problem.
It's a ton of work.
Not a problem. I will be more than happy, we will be more than happy to present to you the scenarios that are associated with this.
I want him to answer. Sorry. Jeff?
Yes, Stephanie. Guys, Stephanie has the floor.
I want to say, because I think it might have become an uncomfortable situation for these four young, this is no reflect, anything that's gone on here is not a reflection on any of your desires for your classes or what we want for you as students. So it was, as Patrick said, it was a great thing for you to come here tonight, and whatever the outcome, you're going to have a fabulous senior year, and you're going to learn a ton, and you're going to go somewhere great. And if you didn't get organic chemistry, then that's the first thing you take. But, but we do appreciate so much that you came here to say what you wanted to say and hope that it was a learning process as well. Every experience is a learning process.
I'd like to second that. Joan?
I have a quick question. If, like, say that within the next week or so, we do have fifteen people sign up because not everybody in this chemistry classes right now are aware of the situation organic chemistry's in, what would be like the very common situation?
I can't answer you, Joan. I mean, ten students signed up for it knowing that the class was available to run, and we're trying to put more kids in there because of your efforts, which I applaud. But all the students who were eligible to take the class know it's available. They chose not to at this point. Ten of you chose to do so. Ten of you chose to put it in your schedule. If fifteen or twenty had chose to put it in their schedule when they made their class selection, we might not even be having this discussion. It's because only ten did. It's not because you ten did, it's because only ten did. It's not, it's not you or Noel or the other students who are at, in the section. It's blind to who you are. It's, I mean, it's blind to you as an individual. It only looks at the probability of the selections.
Any other public comments? Are there any other public comments? Then may I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor? The meeting's adjourned at 9:39, and thank you, ladies.